Hi, I'm 317606, Quarter Circle Road. I stand in favor of the plan. We absolutely need a plan to address community growth and to figure out our collective goals, not just to get federal road money. Those are necessary too. I don't want my property taxes to triple because somebody has to put a plan forward. I am in favor of the plan, but there are some specific suggestions I'd like to make of changes, and I'll try and keep this quick. On page thirteen, "Analysis and refinement of the plan policies to ensure they're aligned with livability principles."
I mean, Mr. Three, we have essentially two parts to this. Are you on the community plans?
The community plan, yes. Livability principles are a loaded concept. When you look at them in bold print as they're printed, they seem pretty benign, but once you get into them, they do have a lot of ramifications for our community. Later comments that I'll be submitting suggest that changes that would look to these as guidance, not the basis for decision-making. If it's not required for funding, consideration to eliminate the livability principles is a concept in the plan. On page eighteen, "A plan amendment may be approved if elected bodies make specific findings that," and then it lists off what needs to be found. I would suggest considering removing those requirements or offering flexibility for the elected officials to consider case-by-case criteria that aren't listed. Page twenty-seven, Cheyenne includes historic neighborhoods, capital north of the block. Strike Rosenberg, it's not a neighborhood. It's a consultant, actually. Page twenty-seven, "While some new residential subdivisions with mixed densities and housing types have developed since 2005, additional diversity in the housing stock beyond traditional single-family homes is needed." I think that statement's unsubstantiated. Mixed-income, mixed-use developments and other diverse housing models are currently popular nationwide. However, that does not mean there's sufficient local demand in this market. Provisions to allow for diverse housing opportunities are fine, but let the market not mandates dictate the direction of future housing development. Page twenty-eight, "The most effective roads are called complete streets." Now, the conspiracy crowd relishes in talking about the evils of sidewalks and bike lanes. The truth is, is that they save lives. Last year on Pershing, a student was hit and killed walking away from Carriage G. High. Pedestrian and bicycle facilities are a design solution to a public safety problem, not a global takeover. Horse Creek Road certainly doesn't need bike lanes and sidewalks, but urban streets do. Thirty-eight, and with this, I need to stop just very quickly and say the Historic Preservation Board is not consulting directly about the provisions on historic preservation in the plan. There's a table called "Future Historic Assets to be Surveyed and Preserve," suggests that we remove this table entirely. Since 2010, the Historic Preservation Board has chosen to halt any proactive historic designations and only pursue new designations by the request of property owners. Our community will be strengthened by raising the bar in quality of new residential development. Again, this is a loaded statement. Not everyone can afford to live in neighborhoods full of amenities and homes with upgraded exteriors. Many residents would prefer stone cladding and pocket parks in order to live in an affordably priced new home. That is the essence of diversity of housing stock. Varied setbacks, architectural design standards, and neighborhood amenities should not be universally applied, but applied in context of the neighborhood and the overall design of the neighborhood. The most regulated neighborhood in Cheyenne is also the highest appreciated, the point. However, not everyone can afford to live there. Universally-applied standards should remain minimal and covenants employed to achieve the unique quality, character, and price points of neighborhoods. Let me go through a few more. "Incorporate landscape medias to divide travel lanes and intersections in high-travel areas." I would suggest striking landscape. Well-designed hardscape medias like the one that's actually pictured in the plan perform the same function. Let me skip over a few of these here. "Enhance the visual quality of roadways by varying overhead utilities," that's on page fifty-three. A very expensive proposition which should be very limited in its application. The cost to vary lines is further increased by the maintenance to repair those lines. And is there a public safety benefit to this, or is it fully aesthetic? Page sixty-one-oneB, "The Future Land Use Plan does not predetermine all land uses on individual parcels and is intended to provide some flexibility for the market to help determine which uses are needed at given time. Consider whether a diverse and integrated mix of uses provided throughout Cheyenne in the entire urbanized area." I would suggest striking some flexibility and replace with deference to. So it would read, "Future Land Use Plan does not predetermine all land uses on individual parcels and is intended to provide deference to the market to help determine which uses are needed at given time."
Mr. Three, your time is almost up.
Okay, okay. I mean, in a very gentle sense, mixed-income, mixed-use neighborhoods should be a development option, not a mandate. Several projects in Cheyenne which attempted this have not been initiated or scrapped completely. That does not mean we need to throw the baby out with the bathwater. It just appears that market isn't quite ready for these, and mandating, putting any requirements on these in the future could act to deter future development and eliminate the housing diversity that we're trying to get. Thanks.
I'm sure most of us, if we were trying to write that down, presuming you had those written down.
I haven't.
Providing a copy, thank you.
Dr. Rennie, and members of the council, I am Carolyn Passino at 5275 Fishing Bridge, Cheyenne. First, I want to make sure that you know that I am not opposed to a plan for a community. I understand the need for such a document. My comments not only suggest, but openly request that the city council and the county commission take the current version of Plan Cheyenne back to their separate boardrooms, research inevitable repercussions and feasibility of all projects and processes. To have a document that goes out thirty years with certainty and the costs that would go with it truly is not feasible, and we know that. I am committing my comments to paper because I testified before the planning board for the county. I saw today what they said. I said, "It sounded shallow and inadequate," and I did say something specific. And when I said that, I even talked about how much money the city and the county get from the state landlord, and the fact that that will have to go on to help pay for everything that, after the hundred-and-fourteen million is gone, there has to be money from someplace to keep these things going. And I just want to make sure that everybody realizes that money that comes from the state landlord is mineral money. It doesn't come from bicycles. I served as a Wyoming legislature slater for ten years. I never saw a piece of paper for a plan or any legislation that didn't have money attached to it. There had to be money to say what something would cost. There isn't one penny anyplace that I can find in this plan to say what it will cost now or later. And I think that's a terrible mistake, because we citizens like transparency, and it means that there isn't any transparency here. I lament that the plan comes from an entity that is not elected, and we know that we all want to go to the people that are elected to say yea or nay. And you're getting a plan from an entity, the MPO, that is not elected, and that, we know how that works, and we wish that it didn't work that way. According to a Plan Cheyenne document that I have from 2006, city officials discussed their objectives with the EPA, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. And the EPA worked with the ICF International, assembling, I'm quoting now, assembling a team of national experts to assist the city in identifying options that would implement Plan Cheyenne. I have included that in my package. I will leave for you the two pages that show that in the very beginning. And I guess that's why you felt that you could bring in a consultant from Switzerland. It seemed silly to me. I have also included the statement of Lisa Jackson, the administrator of the U.S. EPA before the Senate Committee on Banking, Housing, and Urban Affairs in 2009. It was a hearing on greener communities, and here we are, talking about greening us up. You might ask, "How is this information relevant at all to what's going on?" Well, the EPA has led the charge for Plan Cheyenne, and we have all followed along. Let me go back just a smidgen. There was a plan in the state when Mr. Herschler was the governor back in the early eighties. It went on, it became forward, it came through Governor Sullivan, it came through Governor Geringer, all with a necessary plan for our state of Wyoming. And then came Governor Freethalth with his Building the Wyoming We Want, and that included the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. The partnership between Building the Wyoming We Want and the testimony of Lisa Jackson coincide. Her testimony is the link to climate change, clean air, water infrastructure, and water infrastructure is exceedingly important right now. And I guess I will divert just a moment and say that the state of Wyoming is suing the EPA, and we all know about that case that is before the nation out of Riverton. The EPA suggesting that Wyoming does not have jurisdiction in Riverton. Also, in this legislative session, you will see that there is legislation against the problems of air quality, because Wyoming has worked so hard on it, and the EPA is saying, "You're not good enough." The EPA would saddle us with air quality issues, and some of those are okay and some are bogus. And one issue that you may not know yet, and I refer to it as water infrastructure, is coming down the pipe. You don't have it yet. It hasn't been in the federal register, but it is going to have an impact on your Plan Cheyenne, because the EPA at this point is saying that they will have jurisdiction over waters of the United States. And you will be interested in that, because they are interested in an outline that I'm leaving for you that talks about stormwater ditches, irrigation ditches, roadside ditches, and other man-made conveyances that either drain or connect. You're going to want to set this aside until you have that document and you know that you're not going to get us into trouble. Lastly, last thing I'll say is that I will address the green aspect again. The mineral industry is the goose that lays the golden egg for every one of us and all of our programs, and I think we should think about that as this plan goes forward, because they're going to be giving you money forever through the state landlord. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Frank Cole. Our family has been in Cheyenne since 1920, and building business since 1924, and development since 1946. I personally have been involved since 1961, and full-time. I've worked with every planning office that's been in the city, because the first planner was working for the highway when I was working there, and I worked with him, I worked with the very first plan. So I have probably more knowledge of all these plans than anything else. Yes, planning is good, but planning is only as good as the person who tries to write. As developer, we listen to our customers. As a power retailer, I listen to my customers. I didn't buy what I wanted, I bought what I knew my customers wanted. That's what I do in the developer. I have just passed out a section of your land use plan and transportation plan, which I want to go over with you. It's changes that I want made in that plan. I'll first start with, and I think that you know where Walmart is. You see the big B down there on Delrayne Boulevard, white under that is the fire station, so Walmart's right there. The plan, as you see on these big boards here, has everything north of Walmart, basically up towards East Carlson Street, as commercial. As you know, you people did approve a preliminary plan for a three-hundred-and-fifty-unit apartment project in there. Unfortunately, this plan's going to probably be passed before they get the final plan to you, and as soon as they pass the plan, you've basically killed the apartment project totally. It's been sort of iffy what we're going to do with it, but we're not ready to go forward. East Carlson is how we want it, going across the land for the most part. Right south of the word E on East Carlson, south of the streets there, the school district does have sixteen acres in there for two school buildings now, since they got back the land that they had traded off a few years ago, and then they traded with us for that area. Water Tank Bluff, which is WTS, that is on the two twenty-four-inch water mains that cross from section twenty to twenty-one, which the agreement's on those water lines. And you'll hear more later on on Action UDC where they're talking about having development agreements. Well, I consider easements, which spell out what's going to be done, a development agreement. And the water lines, Ray Schrader was very adamant that they were going to be in city streets, and we had a discussion on that, and it could be in either city streets or public parks if a city street is not necessary. There's only two spots on our land where we haven't put them. The city street was not logical at all. And the second easement went through that that would be a collector's street, and that's what needs to be followed. An agreement with the developers. Ogden Road going up to Story Boulevard, the water main that fed Mustang Ridge when they were developed, goes up Ogden Road and across the story boulevard to service Mustang Ridge. That agreement also states that that easement will be in a collector's street. And Ogden Road was started as a collector's street all the way from what's now Congress down there, clear up the story. And it's been planned, cleared, and at least partly built, clear the north edge of Anderson School, which is that great big blue spot by Ogden Road. Mountain Road, I worked way back in the early sixties with the first planning director to establish Mountain Road going up there as a collector. Originally, it was supposed to, south end is going to be more to the east, and Windmill Road in section twenty-eight was going to move to the west to line up with it, because they wanted a collector's street there. But the house has been built all the way up Windmill Road, and as you notice, Windmill Road, if the top has a curb going into Anderson School. It wasn't logical at that time to try to get there, plus north of there, this hill got very steep, and Mountain Road in the hard part followed up through natural drainage. It's still running up there at about an eight percent grade, which is a pretty darn good grade for anything. And we're working on some of it right now. We want that to go on up. So the land use plan for land use north of Walmart is what I want change to follow this. Our land use on our land, and ours, I'm talking about United Western now, east of Congress, they had mixed-use residential. We wanted residential only, so we're taking out that. And we would like the roads as they're on here, which is going back with negotiations and agreements with the city going back as much as nearly fifty years ago. Mr. Edwards owns, if you notice, there's a dash line across there, just a little way south of Story. Mr. Edwards owns the land north of that dash line, and I think he's pretty much in agreement with the general location of how that's going up there. We're working together to try to develop that whole area and not pay attention to property lines. For your information, our family did not have any land in the south half of section twenty-one. We only had sixty acres in northeast quarter, and ninety acres originally in northwest quarter. We did acquire twenty-four acres more from the school district when we traded land in section twenty for future school sites.
Mr. Cole, your time is almost up.
Okay. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to call me. If any of you would like to tour our land, I'd gladly take you out there, one of the one ways, two of you with me, because two of them I put in the cab, the pickup, and I'll drive you around and show you what the country looks like, the entire area. Thank you.
I'm Alan Merson. I'm putting the front iron, and I'm mid on Esten Hill. My security is on that, they're well of sidewalks. I got a scooter because I can't get along, I can't get out, I got a scooter, I die. They're passing that, they're old, and they're way, way deep, deeper than what it is, and the roads ain't that musty, they're higher. I got a piece on here to, and I live by myself, and if I had to get out in a hurry, it'd be kind of hard, because the road will, and the sidewalk is icy, they don't care no sidewalk off here in the, in the Tyco. So that's my tape and phone tonight. Good night, good us.
Thank you.
President, can we ask for clarification, please, just to make sure we understand the issue that she's experiencing?
Yeah.
I understand sidewalk, and I understand scooter. My question is exactly what would she like to see different?
Well, I see the sidewalk twist and, and.
Maintained better?
Yeah.
Can we get that? Okay, so maintained, and you'd like the height addressed?
Yeah, the sidewalk is just all kind of, yeah.
Thank you.
Dr. Rennie, council members? I'm Roger Alexander. I live at thirty-two twelve Holland Park in the city of Cheyenne. I'm here tonight to express my support for Plan Cheyenne and to urge you to approve the updated plan. I don't necessarily agree with everything in the plan, but I do believe it is a carefully considered, comprehensive, and forward-looking document that will help ensure that growth and quality of life in Cheyenne are not mutually exclusive. My personal experience with Plan Cheyenne began about seven months ago, when I received notice that a zone change request and development proposal for the vacant lots adjoining my property had been submitted to the planning office. My neighbors and I opposed the zone change request from neighborhood business to medium-density residential, and somehow we convinced enough of the council to side with us, and the zone change request was denied. But it was also made clear that the lots would eventually be rezoned to some residential category to comply with Plan Cheyenne, which classified the lots as urban residential. Subsequently, another zone change request was submitted to change the zoning from neighborhood business to neighborhood residential, which would provide additional and more stringent design and landscaping standards that would help mitigate impacts to adjoining properties. The developer had made some major changes to his development proposal that addressed some of our concerns. Because Plan Cheyenne had classified the lots as urban residential, because the developer had worked with us to address some of our concerns, and because of the additional and more stringent design and landscaping standards set forth in Plan Cheyenne and its offshoot, the Unified Development Code, the zone change request was not opposed by the adjoining property owners. The zone change request was approved last January. The purpose of my tale is to illustrate how Plan Cheyenne benefited both the developer and the adjoining property owners. The developer was assured that the zoning would be changed to comply with Plan Cheyenne, thus allowing him to exercise his private property rights to develop the land as he wished. At the same time, Plan Cheyenne protected the private property rights of the adjoining landowners by requiring design and landscaping standards to mitigate impacts to our property. Land use planning serves many purposes, including managing growth so it occurs in a manner consistent with the community's needs, desires, and values, providing property owners with a clear and consistent set of parameters governing the development of their property, and providing a vehicle to obtain outside funding. Now, I know some people are against accepting federal funding, but I, for one, am happy to see some of my tax dollars returned to my community instead of being sent to some foreign country like Mississippi or Afghanistan. Plan Cheyenne does all of these things and more, but at its most personal level, it helps protect my rights and investments as a property owner. So I urge the council to approve the updated Plan Cheyenne. It may not be a perfect plan, but what plan is. The important thing is that it can be tweaked, adjusted, and updated, which gives the residents of Cheyenne the opportunity to work together as a community to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
Mr. Chairman, members of the city council, my name is Joe Doertie. I work for the city of Cheyenne as the director of the Cheyenne Transit Program. I think I'd first start by saying that in 1988, kind of like you folks, I got an inkling that I thought I wanted to run for city council, and I ran for city council and was elected, served four years on the Cheyenne City Council. And to make a long story short, I've worked for the city in one capacity or another ever since then. Since 2001, I've worked in my present capacity as the director of the Cheyenne Transit Program. And first year in the business, we ran a little over a hundred-and-fifty, a hundred-and-seventy-thousand rides. Last year, we had two-hundred-and-ninety thousand rides. Our statistics show us that nearly twenty-five percent of the ridership, the people that ride on the bus are seniors. There are people that have, a lot of the people that ride our system are transportation disadvantaged for one reason or another. They don't have financial resources, they have physical or mental problems that prevent them from riding, and then there are people who just want to ride the system, who just utilize the system. We're able to have this system because the federal government steps in every year and writes us a check for fifty percent of our operating costs and writes us a check for eighty percent of our capital purchase costs. And it's been a big boon to our program. We've replaced twenty-two buses more than once. We have built a hundred-and-thirty-thousand-square-foot bus storage facility. We have, with the assistance of some era funding in 2009, we put sixty-five bus shelters into the community that help serve the people that ride the system in one way or another. As, we're able to do that in part because we have agreed that we would participate in planning processes, and we would be able to show them that we've done due process in planning processes, and we would be able to show them that we've done due process in trying to provide meaningful transportation in a well-thought-out way. That doesn't mean that when we have adopted any of a number of plans that we've adopted, that we've stamped them with a good housekeeping seal and said we're going to do everything that the, that the plan state, but it means that we have utilized those as guides in our efforts to move forward. So in my 25 years and experience in, in local government, the planning documents that I've seen come and go, Vision 2020, Vision 2010, whatever it was before then, to my way of thinking, this Plan Cheyenne document's not an awful lot different than the rest of them. It's, they've simply updated census information, they've updated growth pattern information, and we're preparing to, to move forward with that. So I'm, I really, in my 25 years in local government, have to spend some time scratching my head trying to figure out what, what the ultimate danger is. And, and I mean, at the same time, I don't want to play lightly that people don't want extra interference by government in their life, but I really think that we'll be fine. We'll move forward, and if I can, can I answer any questions about our program? I'd be glad to do that. I just think that it's, it's a necessary step and a step in continuing a program that we provide, and I know other federal programs have the same stipulations.
Any questions for Mr. Doerdy?
I do have questions.
Mr. Cook?
Mr. Doerdy, thank you for your comments. My, my question is, just quite simply, what, what would happen to our, our city transit program without, without federal dollars, without federal funding?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. You know, along with Dr. Rennie and some others, I happened to be sitting on the City Council when the first funds became available and the program went into place in 1993. We were able to do that because we went over a census count of 50,000 people for the community. And I can assure you, we would have never considered it then if we hadn't had the federal funding available to, to move forward with it. If we would not have the federal funding now, I would say it would be a very short period of time until the program would, would no longer exist, because I just don't think that the, we could afford to do it with, with local and state revenues.
Mr. Cook, thank you.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the council?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Williams?
Mr. Doerdy, how many free rides do you give a day?
I, I don't have it broken down. On a day, we receive funding from the Wyoming Division on Aging to allow seniors to ride the route system free. And we receive funding from the Community Development Block Grant Program, which is also a federally funded program. Last year, we provided 25,000 free rides. We also had some donated rides from some very kind-hearted people in the community. Mr. Maury Brown's donated thousands of rides to, to citizens to ride the system free. So there, there are a number of people who, who ride free. To put it in perspective, with that 280,000 rides that we provided last year, 290,000 rides that we provided last year, I think we had about $150,000 in, in fare box revenue. Now, some of those people ride multiple times because they buy monthly passes, and they actually end up getting a ride for less than a dollar fare charge, that's normally charged. Could I answer your question?
You did, sir. Another question that I want to ask you, are you, do you help develop these, our routes?
I do. We go through a planning process every five years called the Transportation Development Plan that, although it's not this document specifically, it is a party, part to that, to that plan. And we start through a public meeting process where we ask people to answer surveys, we put in the, try and put in the perspective of what they would like the route system to, to better do. And then we develop them, go through a series of public meetings, have discussions, and from those discussions, we formulate system, system changes to the route system.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You finished, Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Doerdy? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. John Volk, 6670 Red Cloud Trail. First of all, I, I speak in favor of the adoption of the updated Plan Cheyenne. I kind of like Mr. Cole, that around, not longer, I've been at this 47 years in the real estate and development business. Grandfather, my father, probably company's been around 80-plus years. So I can remember when we didn't have any plans, particularly in the county, and we paid for it. So we did, we have to have a plan, and I would like to kind of reflect on what's happened in the last, probably the last 10 years in Cheyenne. You know, since, just, we've, in the last, well, excuse me, the last four years, we've increased employment in this community, 1,700 jobs. And we all know what the, you know, we've kind of had a, kind of mini-boom here. We've experienced a continual growth, which has been extremely beneficial for everyone Just to give you specifics, we talk about the Swan Ranch, which is 8,000 acres. I think there's probably been, Tom and Matt can correct me, but I think there's 800 acres that's been annexed. I'm not sure, maybe it's been more than that. Has it been more than that, Matt? Yeah, so it's been more than that, but it's created 200 jobs. The North Business Park, which is where Walmart Distribution Center is, there's been 700 new jobs. If you go on the eastern side of Cheyenne, down Campstool, Long I-80, all the way to Sapp Brothers, there's 3,500 jobs. So those are three specific developments that Plan Cheyenne has had a specific, they've been part of creating. Without Plan Cheyenne, it would, I don't think it'd be as successful as it's been, and it will continue to be more successful. The specific subdivisions that, right now, like Saddle Ridge, that's 200 acres, and it'll be, it probably will be built out in the next year and a half, that'll be 680 rooftops. So from like Sun Valley all the way east, which is, that's where your solid growth is going to be within the city limits of Cheyenne, there'll probably be at least probably 15,000 residents in the city limits of Cheyenne. Now, let's talk about Plan Cheyenne specifically. Since 2006, once it started, as far as a developer and a realtor, it's been a guideline. It's a plan with a guideline. The City Council, County Commissioners, and the two respective planning commissions have had the authority to make any changes or exceptions they wish to make. And I see that that should continue. Now, the problem with the Plan Cheyenne, or any plan for any city, is that, that you lose the public input because of the potential for the staff, or the county, or the city to take their direction or their interpretation away from the public. That's where the planning commissions, and that's where the county commissioners and the City Council has to use what they think, in their best judgment, should be the exceptions or say, no, that's not what we want, or yes, that is what we want. And I think the thing that kind of, is a developer, has the Plan Cheyenne been more cumbersome and more costly as a developer? Certainly has, but extremely, it makes it much more difficult. Has it been beneficial? In the overall picture, you'd have to say yes. But have we made it easy enough for the public or the developer to get to the county commissioners or get to the county City Council? That that's where you have to have in place, in my opinion, the, kind of have the avenues so you can get to you people to make the decision. I don't see that we've had, you know, too many changes with that, but that is probably what I think bothers a lot of people, particularly when they, a specific individual has to go through a process that they've never been through before. And all of a sudden, I mean, they don't have a clue what's hitting them. It's like a freight train out of a stone stock. So we need to make sure that we keep the process, keep it simple, stupid, so that anybody can try to get to, get a straight answer and not make it too costly and not too burdensome. So that's, you know, that's my spiel. I, I think you got to have the plan. I mean, we don't have a plan, what any road's going to get to there. And it may not be the right road. I can end this by saying on the, like, every time you buy a gallon of gas, you know how much the federal government takes for the federal tax, gas tax? It's 17 cents. As of January 1 of this year, and for the next three years, it's going to 33 cents. So when somebody says, we don't want any federal, we don't want the feds telling us what to do, and we don't want the federal dollars, so are you going to say, well, if we're going to not have Plan Cheyenne, and we're not going to receive any money back, we're going to give 49 cents, 49 states, excuse me, our gas money? Now, that's just a tip of the iceberg. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Volk. Any questions?
I have a question.
Mrs. Williams?
Mr. Volk.
John?
I can say bail out.
You shouldn't ask if we have questions.
Okay, when you mentioned this land, Saddle Ridge, Sun Valley, Campstool, the North Business Park, this one, you are a real estate agent. How much of this land do you own or have you used to help sell the property for development?
Well, I'm a co-developer of Saddle Ridge, that's 200 acres, and Campstool, and I'm one of the developers, and it's 310 acres, and we've been at that one for 19 years. The other, the Cheyenne Business Park and the North Business Park, that's Leeds, we've always been a strong, strong supporter of Leeds, and there's no sales efforts involved in that at all, other than trying to help, you know, help them be successful in bringing in the new companies that want to be here.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right, sure. Thank you, Mr. Volk.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Williams?
I have a quick question for...
Mr. Volk, on side.
Giving your aerobic exercise. Thank you for, thank you for all of that, and I wrote all of those down. You made a suggestion in regards to more of a communication with the public or with people that are developing for the first time, and how, you have some ideas as to how that could be more streamlined or made easier. And I know we don't have time to cover that, because my guess is you have a lot of ideas.
Sure, I can tell you real quick.
Okay. If you can do it quick, go ahead, otherwise I'd like a copy of your ideas.
Well, I just, I'll say one thing. UDC was a great, the idea was to take three documents and streamline it, and the idea is that when, when you take that and create that big of a document, you need to be able to tweak it. There's no way it's going to be perfect. So when it needs to be tweaked, they need to be able to take, staff, the city staff needs to be able to tweak it without making it more cumbersome. And I'm not, that's probably been some hiccups there, but it's not perfect.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Boyd. Boyd Wiggum, Wyoming Liberty Group, and tonight, you're going to hear a lot about big-scale issues regarding Plan Cheyenne. I want to tailor my comments specifically to one narrow issue within the plan, and something that I don't think the plan adequately addresses, and that is the very real economic impacts of policy. This plan sets policy. Policy has consequences. Regulations have cost impacts. And I believe that built within this plan are policies that hurt housing affordability in Cheyenne. The city spends a lot of money on, on trying to attract business, and with that come people. And in this plan, one of the foundations is, foundation number two, creating livable hometown neighborhoods. And since, from, since 2000, from 2010, according to the plan document, housing is becoming less affordable in Cheyenne. Yet, under, under the foundation number two, the 20 policies that are in the plan, of those, 11 talk about design standards and amenities, cost drivers for housing units, where's only four mention affordability. I believe that there's a potential solution that you can insert into the plant, into the plan at this stage. In the build section, you're required to list ways to measure the effectiveness of the plan. I would ask that you request an annual report that you can publish for the people, reporting how the price-to-income ratio that is found on page 27, 28 in the snapshot, snapshot section has changed from year to year to year. Are houses getting more expensive relative to median household incomes over time? A second measure that you could use, that I believe touches on the real cost impacts of, of regulation, and especially the subjective design policies that are within the plan, is perhaps to have a report on what the time, how, how long it takes for an applicant under, under, for a development to get from the initial filing of the application to the appearing on the agenda for a planning commission. Those are two things that you can measure under the build section that get to informing you and the public at large what the real impacts are of the policies within Plan Cheyenne, specifically as they, as they touch on the housing affordability issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Volk.
Dr. Rennie, miss, the committee members, my name is Demi Cross, and I live at 5409 Ryan Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. I just have some observations that I've been making about all this. I think almost everyone, I say almost everyone, knows we need a plan. The question is, is it this plan? I have a copy from 2006 of a plan that was 54 pages long compared to the one we have now, it's 393. And as you know, I always say the devil's in the... And as you know, I always say the devil's in the details, and I have a tendency to look at details. And when I see that, it makes me question some of the things that are in there. And one of them, for example, is in the transportation part of the plan. I looked at the details. There were 203 times that bicycles were recommended or mentioned, and only 30 vehicles were recommended. So do we have a transportation plan or a bicycle plan? I just found that was rather interesting. And so I think that we agree that we need a plan, but is it this plan? Is it one that is so detailed? And maybe there can be a lot of things taken out of it that people are telling you that they don't like, and that we will have a plan that means something for everyone and that everyone would be satisfied with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot something else for this chair. I was going to mention.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, my name is Glenn Chavis. I live at 4,000 Snyder Avenue, and I guess I'm the resident idiot because within the last three weeks, I've been brought to my attention about this Plan Cheyenne. Although I've been aware of it for the last, oh, several years, if you look at the chart here, it has, oh, technical committee, policy committee, city and county, planning commissioners, NPO staff, everything falls underneath his jurisdiction. Last week, I was here. He got up and spoke in front of the council and asked for money, and they asked him what this money was used for, and it was for Plan Cheyenne. It's almost like he has a blank check. Here's where we are as just simple, average citizens. We don't know. What we don't know is what hurts us the most. And maybe I'm, like I said, I'm the resident idiot. But when you have somebody that has so much power, so much money, and there is no feasibility, responsibility, that person grows. We've asked for salaries. We've asked for how much the budget's going to cost, and all we do or we're given is hidden behind statues. We are given websites, links, trying to follow the paper trail of who, you know, whether you're federal, state, city, or all of the above, who are you responsible for? Everybody here is for growth. I'm a resident of Cheyenne. I'm a native of Cheyenne. I want growth. I want amenities. But I want it also by people that are part of my community. You have consultants from out of state that you spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, but we don't know the exact amount because we have to go to a website and we have to follow the trails of where that money is. We are not a Stepford community, nor do we want to be. If you look at our library, you look at... It's exactly like Fort Collins. I don't want to be that type of community. I look at Plan Cheyenne, and it's... We're in a box. Why do you live in Wyoming, folks? For the wide open space, the beauty of its land? That's who we are. This is our community.
Point of order, Mr. President. I love what everybody's saying, and it's so helpful, but can we please not do the applauding? Because we're going to get it from both sides, and it's going to really take a lot of time.
No, I agree. Now, the thing is, the ones that are for pro-Cchyennes with developers and everything, we talked about the unified, the UDC. It is you-don't-care code. The restrictions on this are the strangleholds. When you have a dream, when you have an idea, this, it just keeps you confined. Our country was built on dreams. They were built in garages, and they were built with idealism. When you have these restrictions and you cannot impose, or you cannot impose your dreams, then nothing gets built. With the transportation, Mr. Doherty, you talked about federal money. We do want federal money. But your budget, your planning or your transportation, does it not have a budget? When you ask the federal government, it does not have a budget. You sit there and you ask for those funds, and they allot it to you. With this plan, you know, they talk about the concept of $114 million. But where's that money going? And how much more money after that? We do say, we do want federal money. We want growth. What we don't want is firms that are outside this facility or outside of our town, nine of them. Because I asked in front of the county commissioner meeting here several weeks ago, I asked them to please name five businesses in their community involvement, and they couldn't name them. They couldn't give me five business owners on the south end of town. They couldn't give me five businesses in downtown. If you're part of the community, then know who we are. You're my friends and neighbors. You know who I am. What I speak is the truth. What we don't need is some overblown organization to come in here. And let me put one question. Members of the council and the commissioners, if some of them are here, if you grant the NPO its power, then what do we need you for? Because, you know what? They're going to run his will. I kid you not. So I look at this. You can hide behind your statues. You can be behind your codes and everything else, but hear me. If you grant them what they want, beware Cheyenne. Stepford community. Thank you.
Thank you. Point of order, please. Do not applaud because people feel differently on the other side of the issue too, and it's only fair that everyone get a chance to speak. At what point will we be able to hear from our NPO director in regards to that? Because I heard a lot of those comments, that he's not accountable to anyone, and he's got a blank check. And some of this is not, I know, not true. And I don't know if he wants to address this at this point or at the end, but it's a big theory.
Can you probably come up on your council discussion, Mrs. Broyles? The NPO director did give a staff report, if you recall.
I'm not sure that it was hers by everyone that was here. Thank you. We'll ask again in a few minutes, I guess, when we get that out of town.
Can we have a public comment?
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Good evening. My name is Maureen Hurley. My address is 1305 Hackamore Road, Cheyenne, 82009. And I just kind of feel like hearing the developers, the gentleman who's head of transportation... I only live here. I moved here 11 years ago because I wanted to get away from LA County. I was born and raised in California, and I just didn't care to live there anymore. And it absolutely breaks my heart to see this plan and what possibly could be happening to this community. We have a wonderful community. We have a quality of life here that you don't find in many other areas. And the thing for the bicycle and the pedestrians, how many months out of the year can people be riding their bicycles and walking to get groceries, et cetera? We moved here in June, and I had a 10-year-old daughter at the time. She wanted to go around the neighborhood, and so she got on her bike. She came home like 15 minutes later. She had been blown off her bicycle by the wind. She had skinned elbows, skinned knees, and, you know, we have wind. We have inclement weather here that you don't have other places. It is not feasible for people to do their shopping on a bicycle. How are you going to care? You know, when I go to the grocery store, I spend $200 in groceries. How am I going to get on a bicycle and do my grocery shopping? It's not going to happen. You know, when you limit the road for vehicles and you put in bicycle lanes and you take property that doesn't belong to the city to put in pedestrian lanes and bicycle lanes, that's just not right. It's just not right. And like I said, I sit and listen to all these people who have a financial interest in this Plan Cheyenne. I don't have a financial interest. I have a quality of life interest. And to see things change and see this community become like Fort Collins, we will just pick up and move because it's not the place that we came to, that we have learned to love with the Western heritage and the boots. What do you do with the boots? Where are those boots going to go? You know, I'm asking you, please don't do this to the community. Please take a second look at it. And I would like to suggest that perhaps there's some way that the community can vote on this, instead of having somebody draw up a plan and we find out about it, you know, even months or years down the road. I saw announcements in the newspaper, but it didn't mean anything to me because I don't know about engineering. I don't know about road construction. I don't know about those things. And then all of a sudden, you know, I find out about Plan Cheyenne, and I pull it up on my computer, and it's unbelievable. It goes on and on and on and on and on. And unless you are educated in what Plan Cheyenne is about, you can't unravel all of that. But I know enough about it. I sent emails to a couple of people here on the council, and they asked me for specifics. I went through as much of that plan as I could, and I found things that I felt were not right for this community and certainly not things that I was comfortable with. And I emailed the people back with the section and where everything was. I never heard back from those people. So I just... As a resident of this community that I love, I absolutely love. We have raised three children here. I now have other small children that I'm raising. And we moved here for the quality of life. You know, why are you people here? Because of the community, because of the way we live right now. And to have a plan that wasn't even drawn up here in the United States, it makes no sense to me. Why have people come in and tell us how weird to live here in Cheyenne? I think there's a lot of arrogance in that. And I just ask you, please, take a look at the plan, see how different it's going to make this community. And like I said, I don't own 400 acres. I don't... I have 2.9 acres. And I love it because we've got some space. And bicycles and pedestrian walking, we have 37 miles of greenway that I walk. How many sidewalks are there downtown? If people need to walk, we've got sidewalks. There's sidewalks in every new development that has been built. So, you know, until they get these activity centers built where you have everything in a small area, and you walk to the pharmacy, you walk to the store, you walk to the bank, you walk to the school, how many years is that going to take? And one more thing, there is nothing that I've found in the plan that guarantees payment of any of this. They are... They say expected federal funds. Do you people know that our federal government is broke? We are broke. We are broke. Where is that money going to come from? Well, I'll tell you where it's going to come from. It's going to come off from the backs of everybody sitting here and you people sitting up there. Because the government does not generate income. They don't generate it. All the income they have comes from people like myself and like you. So I just ask you, please take a look at it, and don't allow this to happen to our community. Let's either take a vote on it, let's get more community input, and let's draw up a plan that preserves our quality of life. Thank you for allowing me this forum.
Mr. Chairman, council members, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide input tonight. My name is Kathy Muller Ogilvy, and I represent myself. Tonight, I'd like to speak in favor of Plan Cheyenne. In my opinion, Plan Cheyenne provides an important umbrella framework for planning transportation developments within the city. Planning is a critical element of an effective and efficient city. I have lived in Cheyenne for over 30 years. I am proud of how Cheyenne has developed during that time, and I commend you for your leadership that has encouraged these improvements. I hope the city will continue to develop in this positive manner. There are three items I would like to address. The importance of planning, recognition of Cheyenne's cultural heritage, and my connection to Cheyenne and Wyoming. First, importance of planning. Planning is critical to the success of personal careers, business operations, and municipal development. Plan Cheyenne provides a framework for effective and efficient transportation development of Cheyenne. As Ben Franklin said, "By failing to prepare, you are preparing to fail." As a city moves forward, it is important to effectively and efficiently use all funding available to the city and to not waste taxpayer funds. For example, a comprehensive plan such as Plan Cheyenne allows the city to develop segments of roads as funding becomes available, but assures that the appropriate interconnection is considered during the development of each of those individual segments. I would also like to speak to the second item, recognition of Cheyenne's cultural heritage. I've read comments that individuals are concerned that Plan Cheyenne does not recognize Cheyenne's special cultural heritage. I want to assure you that the plan is flexible enough to accommodate those considerations. For example, the West Lincoln Way Streetscape Plan includes materials that are reflective of our Western heritage and designs that celebrate Cheyenne's proud railroad history. And last, I would like to just briefly give you my connections to Cheyenne and to Wyoming. I have lived and worked in Cheyenne for over 30 years, and my family has been part of Wyoming since the 1880s. I'm proud to call this community my home, and I relate this information just to let you know that there is local support here for a plan in this order of development. And I would thank you for allowing me to address this group.
Thank you.
I am Stacy Lynn. I am from Laramie County, Colorado. Councilor Allen, I noticed, is not here tonight, but he has expressed some concerns about Plan Cheyenne and the UDC codes being a so-called conspiracy theory. The legal definition of conspiracy is an agreement between two or more people to commit an illegal act along with an intent to achieve the agreement's goals. Most US jurisdictions require an overt act toward furthering the agreement. And an overt act is not a statutory requirement. It's a statutory requirement, not a constitutional one, so keep that conspiracy definition in mind. Councilor Allen and others who are trying to ignore the evidence-based facts and statements about Plan Cheyenne's illegal and unlawful programs and policies are grossly mistaken that all of these people are victims of their own imaginations. I'm here tonight because I do live in Fort Collins, Colorado. We're a few years ahead of you in Plan Fort Collins. We did our update a few years ago, and you're doing yours now. The impacts that we are experiencing are real. I have the front pages of the past seven days from Fort Collins, Colorado, in paper. And these pages are telling what Plan Fort Collins has done to our community. Business owners are suffering. People, as I spoke a few weeks ago, of low-income minority and elderly populations are being impacted the most. In a few short years, this is Cheyenne. As you will see, there is no conspiracy theory surrounding Plan Cheyenne or Plan Fort Collins. However, the facts that have been presented by the people of this community do indicate that you all may have a legal issue with conspiracy. This is February 25th. You have bicycle riders in the left turn lane on a major thoroughfare in Fort Collins. This is the next day. We are asking taxpayers to become a top bicycle-friendly community by hiring more bicycle representatives for the city. This is on February 15th. In a city that ranks number three for bicycle commuters, many of us are complaining about the roads this year because we have so much rain and so much snow. So even though we have all of these programs dedicated millions of dollars to biking and walking, they're still not happy with that. Now, here's what happens to business owners. We've been removing parking spaces in downtown Fort Collins for a number of years. And on February 24th, front page says, "Downtown parking solutions are being sought." Businesses are losing... Entire businesses are closing because we've removed parking spaces for bike racks on the street. And because we've added bike lanes down the middle of our business thoroughfares, it's very difficult to navigate the streets in downtown. This one is a bicycle article. Again, every day, we have bicycle crashes, pedestrian crashes, and requests for more bicycle funding. On Monday, March 3rd, that was yesterday, the headline is "Bicycle Safety Education Plan Needs Funding and Staffing." Now, these are all the same things that are in Plan Cheyenne. That's why I bring this tonight. The first paragraph says, "The outbreak of bike crashes calls for full funding of the city's bicycle safety education plan." That's in Plan Cheyenne as well as in Plan Fort Collins, the exact same language. A lot of people have been talking about, and I know Mr... The Wyoming Liberty Group talked about this specifically. This was in March 2nd, our Sunday front page. The title is squeezed out. Home prices and rental rates are outpaced... "Home Prices and Rental Rates Are Outpacing Population and Income Growth." Now, who this is impacting the most is the minority population. We have a whole series coming up in Fort Collins newspaper called "The Community in Crisis." The, the biggest issue in Fort Collins right now is affordable housing. Now, Plan Cheyenne addresses affordable housing in the same way that Plan Fort Collins addressed affordable housing. You have the exact same language. We're three years ahead of you. It's destroying our housing and rental market. Another headline says, "The Housing Shortage Threatens the Spirit of Fort Collins." Now, this is in our, our local newspaper. They have been reluctant in the past to focus on the impacts of these plans because it's not so popular, to tell the truth. On March 23rd, we're going to learn about how even professionals making a decent income are hard-pressed to afford a home in Fort Collins. The median wage is not keeping up with the average cost of rentals. And the reason for that is because of the restrictions on builders and developers. We have another article that says, "We Can Do More to Make Biking Safer and More Prevalent." That was in Sunday's paper. This is where it gets really good. You're working on updating your corridors, Del Range and Pershing Boulevard. We're doing the same thing. Ours is a Lincoln Corridor Plan. What's happening is this was presented to the city council last week in Fort Collins. The plan was a one-mile stretch in downtown Fort Collins and it was going, we're talking about costs now, this is real, real-time cost. This is what a city councillor said. "Some might argue it's just a plan and not set a policy, but plans matter." And Mayor Pro Tem Jerry Horak said, "Because they set an expectation for what the city will do, people remember plans and they like to hold the officials to them." This is happening right now in Fort Collins. We also had our State of the City address last week. Remember, all of these, these headlines are saying how these plans are impacting our community. It's devastating the people who live there and the business owners. So, our mayor and our city manager, Mayor Karen White, and city manager Darren Atterbury got up in front of hundreds of people and said this. "The state of the city is solid as a rock at moving forward." That's troubling. Maybe you still believe that Plan Cheyenne is just a theory and a simple guide. As an investigative journalist, I have the opportunity to go deeper into these issues in these communities. These people are all informed. They're aware of the damage that is coming their way. Something interesting happened today. I want to thank Mr. Mason for fulfilling the legal open records access request that I had submitted on the eight open records for your consult, your external consulting firms. And I'll be looking into those as the week progresses. While we were in the office, the city planning office for Cheyenne, we noticed this on the table and it's called "The Western Planner." Now, the local media likes to pretend that Agenda 21 doesn't exist and that this is all made up in these people's minds. This is "The Western Planner," issued January 2014. In the city planning of Cheyenne, this is the Agenda 21 issue. It appears that Agenda 21 does exist. Mr., hi.
Ms. Lynn.
Yes. So, I just want you to know that these people do know what they're talking about. The Fort Collins paper does know what they're reporting about and a lot of damage is coming your way. Now, why do I care? I'll finish with this. I care because I've basically been run out of the city of Fort Collins. I can't afford to live there anymore. It's hurting people. It's hurting business owners. These people know that because they're doing their research as well. And to say Agenda 21 doesn't exist, it's, it's right here. It does exist. And so, these people know that and they're concerned. I've fallen in love with Cheyenne. Do you know, we met the governor today? Governor Mead.
I gave you more time than anyone else.
I'm, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't realize that. Governor Mead walked out of his office today and we had the warmest conversation. Do you know, you cannot go in the Capitol Building in Denver, Colorado without being searched? You have a treasure in Wyoming. You have people that are warm, you have people that are concerned and connected. Governor Mead is a fabulous man. To walk out of his office in a spur of the moment, protect your treasure. I value this community. I value these people. And I will do all I can to keep telling the truth for their benefit. Thank you.
Thanks for giving us a chance to, to show this, to talk about this information. I was with Stacy Lynn and we got a chance to meet the governor. And I would like to point out, my name is Bruce Bowman, for the record. I live in Colorado and I decided to come up here to film this today because it's highly important and need this information. It's international news. I want everyone to know that this is, this is world news going on right here in Cheyenne, Wyoming, my friends. I'd like to point out, this is a pocket knife. I had a pocket knife walking into the Capitol today and I felt very scared. I was like, "Oh, I'm going to have to go back to the car and I'm going to have to go put this back." And there's no security at your Capitol downtown. That's a weird feeling. You know what that is? That's a natural feeling. That's natural law right there, my friends. That is what we are trying to preserve here in Cheyenne. It's a precious jewel here. It really is. You guys saw what happened down in Colorado. The legislators passed laws to abuse the Constitution and limit, limit guns. What happened to those lawmakers? They were pulled. They were recalled, three of them. So, this is very strong. The correlation we have here is, like she pointed out, Agenda 21 is a real issue. It is going down internationally. These folks in the room that support Plan Cheyenne, they all seem to have a financial benefit, something that is going to help them out by passing Plan Cheyenne. So, what I would like to do is let's do something very quick and those who are able, I would like you to stand up if you oppose Plan Cheyenne. If you oppose.
Point of order.
Seems, seems to me the people have spoken.
Absolutely. I don't want to hit you with that.
This is Broyles.
My point of order was stated three times and ignored for the last three times. I want to hear, so let us all start laughing on all, everybody that says something positive. I'm trying to be fair and reasonable to everyone, Mr. Chair. We're going to go this direction and we'll applaud for everything.
I didn't ask for any applause. I just asked the people to have their voices heard. The people have spoken and you guys now have the chance to stop Plan Cheyenne, make international news, and lead other communities to do the same. And so, I'm looking at each of you guys and you guys have the power to make world news. And you guys, right now, I'm asking you guys to oppose Plan Cheyenne. Thank you very much.
Mary Meyer, 8914, Bray Hill Road. I'm already a talk show host and have, I had Stacy Lynn on. That's how this whole thing got started. I thought it was really important to have her up for the people to know. Without this happening, I didn't know what was going on. I even talked to somebody at a gun shop today. They didn't even have a clue what was going on. So many people I've talked to did not have a clue, did not understand. Then resolve, the whole thing that I see with Plan Cheyenne is taxation without representation. I believe that we should bring in a vote and not let 15 people vote for it. Let the people vote. And I have the Wyoming Constitution right here. $2 at the Capitol. And this is, "All powers inherit the people." Let the people's voices speak. I think it's so important. I think freedom should be for the people. I think that we should let the people speak. It's important to me that, here we have the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of Wyoming. They're simple documents. They're self-evident that they're simple. But when we're looking at Plan Cheyenne, it's so thick. I found out that policy always follows law. Law does not follow policy. So, we have to follow what the law says. And when we have such big things, anything can be thrown in there. I've been told that it's actually a living document. Our Constitution isn't a living document. And if it's, if it's a living document, things can be thrown in there at any time and not know what's going on. With all the policies and regulations, you may try to hide the law. But it's self-evident. For over 200 years, we've had the Constitution and it's been awesome. We've seen how people's freedoms, it's been self-evident. We've seen the creation of people, what they've done. Don't stifle the people. I'm just asking, let the people speak. It's important to me, let the people speak. Because you know what? Freedom is so important. And you are all my brothers and sisters that are standing for freedom. Thank you.
My name is Major Dorr. I live at 3007 Ben Avenue. I've lived in Cheyenne for 67 years. I've lived in the same house for 60 years. Since Cheyenne is slowly moving from a cowboy towns, except frontier days, toward an industrial city. I feel it's necessary for the city to have a solid plan to accommodate this growth. The plan should include the type of growth that is best for Cheyenne, Wyoming. We must be modern. We must provide housing that is sufficient to encourage out-of-state workers to live in Cheyenne. We must incorporate and update safety features such as bike lanes, law enforcement, fire protection, safe streets, streets with lane markings, and without too many puddles. And the list could go on and on. This plan can best be put together by local people, not out-of-staters. Local people who live in Cheyenne and know the city. By having a plan drawn up by locals, governed by locals, it can also be adjusted by locals. There must also be a degree of give and take, as with every set of rules, plans, guidelines, whatever you have. There must be a degree of flexibility. Remember, this is Cheyenne, Wyoming, not Fort Collins, Colorado, Las Vegas, Nevada, Buffalo, New York, Chicago, or anywhere else. This is Cheyenne, Wyoming. It is unique in its own way. It's a lovely city. It's a growing city. Those of us who have lived here for many years have watched it. I can remember when we used to drive out on Sunday afternoon to vet's administration and the tank up on top of the hill. That used to be a pretty nice old Sunday drive. Of course, the cars were old, 37 bottles too. A lot of changes. I sincerely believe that this plan should be drawn up by local people only, knowing what Cheyenne is like now, what it has been, and what it can be. And I believe it should be governed by local people. And I sincerely have all the faith in the world in our council people, our mayor, the council, the police chief, the fire chief, sheriff, everyone else that has anything to do with the governing of Cheyenne. We can make it. We can make it. Let's be patient. Growth does not come easy. Growth requires patience. Thank you.
I'm against Plan Cheyenne. I'm not against the plan, but I'm against Plan Cheyenne. But I have a proposal to solve this dilemma called Plan Cheyenne. A debate, a public debate before any final vote by you or the county commissioners. If the plan is the only plan to sustain our city and county, it should be quite easy to defend. Delay this vote and make your best stand. Show us you really know what Plan Cheyenne is all about. We, the people, are sure this is not for Cheyenne and can certainly back it up anytime and anywhere. And after we've won this debate, put it to a vote and let the people decide their future. So, what say you? Can you prove this plan is the savior for our city? Back it up or vote it down.
My name's Eric Miller. I live at 1006 Plum Street. I have a problem with Plan Cheyenne simply because of that. I came to the state of Wyoming because I heard that Wyoming was the most conservative state in the Union. I believe that. But if we tear down the city of Cheyenne for someone else's goals, a European design, one-world order, well, so goes the city, so goes the state. So goes the state, so goes the nation. We have a rough road ahead of us to keep our sovereignty that we must deserve in the state because we work hard for it. Now, if you don't believe that we're not a Western type of people, then why do we have a bucking bronco on our license plate? Why do we have a buffalo on our state flag? Why every year do we have Frontiers Day? Why? Because we believe in being Western and that's our heritage. I'm a newcomer. I grant you that. But I've seen what happens when they tear down private homes and put up multi-dwellings. I've seen all this. And when you cram a bunch of people into one area, they become hostile. They become less neighborly. I like the idea, I can go out anywhere in Cheyenne and someone will say, "Good morning, good afternoon, good evening." A lot of people know me by my name. They'll say, "How you doing, Eric?" I'll say, "How you doing, John?" I love that. And they live way across town somewhere. But you try that in a city that's gone awry. I remember them building, well, not building, but they built these projects called the Martin Luther King Projects in New Jersey. You know how long they stood? 16 years and they had to level them. Because that's what happens when you cram a whole bunch of people into one area. And one other thing, anyone thinks that they can go out and haul a cart of wood with their bicycle. I love the pickup truck, man. I love my four-wheel-drive vehicles. This is the climate and area design for these things, these vehicles. And if someone tells me I have to surrender that for a bicycle, you know what I'm going to tell them? They can go to H-E-double-L.
Point of order, Mr. President. You know exactly what I'm going to say in the paper, but point of order number eight. Great points, a great conversation, however, it's not appropriate and it's unprofessional. We went, I was present at the meeting of the county health and most, the majority of people had a lot of things, they were against Plan Cheyenne. I wanted to hear everything that they had to say. Their planning, their person in charge, their planning commission also stated the same thing in that meeting, is not professional to be clapping after what people have to say. No matter what side, the people are on the issue. It's not how we run. So, please, accept, you know, accept what I'm asking you to do and support it so that we can focus and concentrate. I'm still writing down comments of what people are saying and the clapping is distracting. Sometimes I agree with it, but it's still distracting.
At this time, can we ask for a break, please?
We've got 15 more minutes.
I just feel that maybe at this time and point that maybe we need to take a break.
All right. We will take. 7:40, we will be back at 7:50.